Good evening and welcome to the regular business meeting of the Cape Elizabeth School Board on Tuesday, May 10th, 2016. If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none. Item number two, approval of school board minutes. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the school board minutes. Executive session Tuesday, April 12th, regular business Tuesday, April 12th, and executive session Wednesday, April 27th, all 2016.
Second.
All those in favor? That's, okay. And item three, comments by student representatives.
So, let's see, right now at Cape High School, for the past week and a half, so last week and this week were the AP exams week, which is never a fun time, but we only have two more left. I think there's, I think the school only has two more. I think that macroeconomics and statistics are within the next three days, and I believe that's, those are the only two left. So that's exciting. For the seniors, Friday is our last day of school. This is our last week, so Montana and I only have three days of school left, which is like fantastic, terrible, and surreal and weird. But yeah, at this point, I mean, at this point, everyone is pretty much done with AP exams, except for the people who have to take macro and stats. All the seniors know where they're going to college, so this whole week, we're having like a senior spirit week, where every day we have a different theme. We all went up in front of the school and wrote in chalk the name or the logo of the schools that we're going to next year. So it's been really fun, it's a really fun week. Like, for us, we don't really have any work to do anymore, so it's been pretty relaxing and exciting. We're all leaving for STP next week. Prom is on Saturday, and then we're all leaving, well, not leaving, but you know, not going to be at school for the next three weeks because we're going on our STPs. But, yeah, sorry.
So, for those who still have a couple of weeks left, we're kind of in the middle of fourth quarter right now, and so most students who have already taken AP exams, most of those classes, the workload kind of lightens up. You still do things in your classes, but it's not as much as it was prior to preparing for the AP exam. Tonight is the last band concert of the year, and for many of the seniors, this is their last band concert ever. And in addition to that, Mock Trial is heading off to Boise, Idaho, and I was on the Mock Trial team at one point, so I know how much preparation goes into that, and they spend a lot of time every night preparing, rehearsing, and so this is kind of like a big event for Mock Trial, because they're competing against other teams nationally. And additionally, additional, in addition to that, Matthew Fishbein won the state championship in chess, so chess has been doing very well this year, again. And, yeah, I believe that's it.
Just for the public, I would love if you guys would just tell us what STP means and a little bit about what that is. I mean, our big audience, but people do watch this on TV.
So, STP is the Senior Transition Project, so every senior has, normally it's two weeks, but this week it's three weeks, just because of the way that the calendar worked out. So every senior gets a chance to go out into the community, find a person who's involved in the career field that they think they're interested in, and you essentially just shadow them, work alongside them for anywhere from one week to three weeks. And it's just a good way to, for some people, determine if the field of, the career field that they think they're interested in would actually be something that they could see themselves doing. Once they get out of college, for some people, it's just a way to, you know, maybe they have three different options, and they really don't know what, like, they don't know where they want to go after college, and they're just kind of testing out their options and seeing what they like. For some people, like, I have a bunch of friends that are working at bakeries for three weeks, and they're like, I don't know what I want to do, I just want to do something fun for three weeks, so they're going to work like at scratch or something.
So, yeah, and then I believe that STP required a total of 84 hours over the course of three weeks, so I, you have to go, I mean, you can go for a certain amount of time each day, and it has, it has to cover three weeks. You can't do 84 in the first week and then take two weeks off. It has to be the total of three weeks. And STP kind of, I just lost what I was going to say.
I mean, it's a really cool opportunity. A lot of students that I've talked to have done some really cool stuff. I know my mom is actually hosting, like, hosting one of my friends, and she works at Intermed in Portland, and my friend's going to be following her around with seeing patients, and she can actually go, she can actually, you know, watch surgery and do really cool, fun things like that. I have another friend who's working with a cancer specialist, because she's interested in doing something with public health. I have a friend who's going to Connecticut to work in magazine publishing and is working at an art museum. What are you doing?
I am going to a hospital, and I'm going to be following an oral surgeon and infectious disease doctor, and, for two weeks. And then, for the last week, I will be over at Manny Burgers', which Max Barber, who previously graduated from Cape Elizabeth, is in charge of, and so I'll be doing things like ordering, ordering the food that's necessary, organizing events. And what I was going to say earlier is that STP, at the end of the three weeks, we're required to give a presentation and kind of conclude what we've been doing for the three weeks and talk about it. And I believe we're presenting to freshman advisory students this year about our findings and what was interesting, what's not interesting, and so that's when STP wraps up with a presentation.
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but we all appreciate hearing from you.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item number four, comments from the public on agenda items. Seeing none. Moving on to item five, communications. I'm going to give a brief update on our superintendent search for the public. We have concluded our search, our candidate withdrew, and knowing that these things happen sometimes, it takes more than one cycle of a search to find the right match. We were prepared and will be moving forward with finding an interim superintendent. Within the next couple of weeks, the board will be able to hopefully conclude that search, and we will get back to the public as we know more. But we are looking to relaunch our search for a full-time permanent superintendent next fall, early next winter. So that's what's going on right now. And over to Ruth Allen, who is standing in for Meredith tonight for our superintendent's report.
Okay, and I have a fairly lengthy list. Congratulations to Cape Middle School student Annie Guimond, who's been named one of Maine's top 10 environmental visionaries for her skyscraper farming video submission to Maine's Meridian Stories competition. Congratulations to her and to her teacher, Hannah Roner. Annie will be recognized at the Blaine House in Augusta on May 25th, and she also receives $100. The Cape Elizabeth South Portland Career Fair was held on May 4th at South Portland High School, and it was attended by our juniors, thanks to Cherie Inman and to Jane Everly in South Portland for their efforts in coordinating the event, and to the South Portland Cape Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce for their participation and support for the event. Our Spanish teacher at the middle school, Susan Dana, one of our Spanish teachers, has been selected to present a session on traditional games in the digital world at the National Actful Conference in Boston in November, which is a fairly big deal. Our high school nurse, Deborah Braxton, has earned her national school nurse certification, which is also a very big deal. We have 14 Latin I students who earned national recognition for the 2016 National Latin Exam. Let's see, I have Hannah Babcock, Will Pearson, Max Woods, Anna Freiberg, Zaylee St. Jean, and Lauren Abrahamson, who earned summa cum laude, Quinn Hewitt, Allison Ingles, Lotus Luke, Alex Riggle, Max Riggle, Andrew Flaherty, and Libby Palanza earned maxima cum laude, and Rosalie Stevens earned magna cum laude. So, that was also a fairly big deal. We have our sixth graders currently at Chawanki, and they have fabulous weather for this week. Sophomore poster night will be held May 18th. We had a presentation on that at an earlier board meeting, and if you are interested in volunteering as a judge, we could still use a few more judges, so please contact the high school. Kudos to our choral music teachers, Becky Bean, Nancy Murray, and Joanne Lee, for their district-wide choral concert on the 28th. The high school spring concert is being held this evening, and the elementary school is wrapping up its grade level concerts as well. Middle school concert will be held on Tuesday, May 17th. Congratulations as well to students in Ms. Lee's introductory guitar class, who's had a performance at Thomas Memorial Library last week. And it's easy to see why Cape Elizabeth was named as a 2016 Best Community for Music by the National Association for Music Merchants Foundation. Thank you too to Tom Lazott and Caitlin Ramsey for their contributions to the music program. If you miss next Tuesday, you can see the middle school band live and marching in the Memorial Day Parade on the 30th. The middle school will host a color guard and flag folding ceremony at a special assembly on the 27th, headed by, coordinated by head custodian Denise Ordonias. The high school musical, The Little Mermaid, is scheduled for May 27th, and will feature some Poncove third graders as well. Senior class recognition will be held on June 9th, and graduation is scheduled for Sunday, June 12th. I'm sure those are dates you have.
Yes.
And CESE has announced its spring grants awards. To the library, Poncove Library Learning Commons, for 21st Century learners, there's a $42,840 grant for a collaborative effort designed to bring together Poncove's Ever-Strengthening Technology Integration Program by updating the library media center to create a fluid, flexible innovation space for students and teachers. There is a $4,950 award to Poncove first grade teachers to attend the Columbia Teachers' College, the Teachers' College at Columbia University Summer Reading Institute. This is a five-day institute focusing on innovative teaching methods, curricula, and revitalized thinking. This is, the group intends to pilot units of study for teaching reading at the first grade level beginning in September, and this is spearheaded by Amy Kirin and Linda Alfiero. There's $3,630 to fund the Cape's robotic team led by Evan Thayer. This is for their solid modeling and 3D printing upgrade. This supports the team's goal of using solid modeling software to more efficiently develop prototypes and to complete robotics designs, and to print 3D parts for their robots. There's $7,800 funding a middle school project-based learning initiative led by Laura Ellis. This is an innovative cha, change in teaching methods and a way to engage students. The group's plan is to start small and successfully implement in grade seven, making it easier for other grade levels to transition to project-based learning. The high school library and learning commons will receive $8,660 for a lib, for renovation, led by Carolyn Young and Jonathan Warner. And this highs, this summer, the high school library will be transformed into a dynamic learning space. The grant will be applied to purchasing lightweight tables, mobile shelving units, and end caps. And finally, 500, $5,580 will fund a high school sexual assault awareness day, coordinated by high school students Carolyn Lengel, Natalie Gale, Maggie Gleason, Lily McKenzie, and Stephen Bennett. This event will be on May 23rd and is targeted at upperclassmen dedicated to raising awareness about and giving strategies for the prevention of sexual assault. And that is the report.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, item 6A. I would like to just preview that really quickly. The reason that this item is showing up on our agenda again is that there was a procedural error, and it was my procedural error with regards to Robert's rules, and so we're just for procedure's sake going to vote again. So may I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Poncove School Student Early Release Schedule, providing five student early release days with a 1:30 PM dismissal.
And is there any discussion?
I would just like to say that I'm going to vote no. Not because I'm opposed to early release. I was, I was appreciative of the teachers who came to talk to us two months ago, and I thought they gave compelling reasons for their need for early release, so I was appreciative of their, of their sincere ask, and I was also appreciative that they worked hard to make this a much shorter early release, so that kids could be attended to at school and ride the buses as usual and take away any issues of daycare, and I'm just concerned that five days is actually less time than they had this year. So I'm voting no, not because I don't believe in early release, but that I, I would have liked to have supported their initial request for seven days.
I'm going to echo Barbara's comments. I think it's disappointing that we think that it looks like professional development was something that was working. We seemed to have a request for more of it, and we ended up with less of it.
Yeah, I would just say, and it's, we can vote however you vote, and we're not planning to vote how we did before, so I would say, you know, all proposals the school board asked, there was never a request from the school board to reduce the amount of professional development time. So the proposal that was made last time actually reduced professional development time, because I think this just has the dismissal time for the students, but a five-day early release at 1:30 would actually reduce the number of professional development hours. So if, at a minimum, I think we should at least maintain the number, the hours of professional development, because we never requested a proposal to reduce that. So I would encourage everyone, and if possible, to amend this motion to provide five student early release days with a 12:00 PM dismissal.
Are you asking for an amendment?
I, I am.
Okay. So we need to vote on that amendment?
Second.
Okay. And we need to vote on the amendment to have discussion of the amendment, so all those in favor of Michael's amendment?
I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding what we're voting on. We're voting on...
Michael, can you explain your...
Sure. The request, the amendment I would make would be to keep the early release day scheduled the same way it is this year. By moving it back to 1:30, it will be actually a reduced amount of professional development time for the, for the teachers.
I understand that part. It's procedurally, so are we voting...
Yeah, what are we voting?
Are we voting to second his motion, so that then we open discussion?
So John seconded it, and because, so if it's a friendly amendment, the, the person who made the amendment can just accept it. It, I don't...
You mean, made the motion?
Of the amendment, you can accept the amendment, or you can, if it's not a friendly amendment, you need to vote on it, which is why we're revoting tonight on last week, on last month. So right now, we're just voting to accept Michael's amendment.
But when you say, that's, that's where you catch me, is the language. When you say, "accept his amendment," are we voting to approve his amendment? Or are we voting to put his amendment on the table for further discussion?
Yes.
The latter. We're voting to put it on the table for further discussion.
Your voting that the amendment would then be open for discussion and would be then what you would vote on.
Okay.
So we would not be voting on the, the motion on the table if we accept the amendment?
Okay. Thank you for that.
Then we would be discussing and voting...
It replaces...
It replaces the original...
It would replace the current...
Replace the original motion.
It replaces the current motion, because you have now an amended motion, and then you would be discussing and voting on that. Should that motion not, should that amendment not pass, then you have the option of returning to the original motion.
Or we also have the option of right now not voting to accept the amendment?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Which keeps us with the original motion.
Yes. You have a motion on the table that you, if it's been amended, you have to vote about the amendment before you can move on.
And we're going to do this right this time.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you for walking us through that process painfully slowly, because I don't think we want to do this again in June.
So at this time, we have an amendment on the table for five early release days at the time...
Keep it the same way.
Same as it is this year.
It was this year, the same.
And John has seconded that motion to an amendment, so now we need to vote to accept the amendment. Or, well, so all those in favor of accepting the amendment? So let's open discussion.
So I am accepting the amendment, because it was, the original request was for five days, a half-day release day, which would just extend what we've previously approved. It's no change from the existing calendar. And I truly believe if we're going to give somebody a half a day, you may as well give them a half a day, not an hour and a half. Because from my understanding, getting into professional development time, you know, there's transition time, there's setup, it's, if I'm going to give time to the teachers to do this, I want it to be quality use of time. I will say, however, that I think moving forward in coming up next year, I think we need to workshop it way before it comes to calendar, to talk district-wide, more wholly. I think that's what's really hanging us up, is process. So if we're going to do something, I don't agree in half measures, ironic, about a half day, but moving forward, I would really not like to get into this again next year and talk about it in a more wholesome way.
Can I speak?
Yeah, Heather.
So, I still sit in the position that I feel like the half-days, when there's a release at 12 o'clock, is not taken as useful for the students and that they come home, and not enough is achieved on that day, from my perspective as a mother who hears from children, the opinion and attitude and thought regarding that day from the student's perspective. And I felt like the 1:30 dismissal would take that aspect away, and they're in school for a longer period of time, just enough to actually make something out of the day. So that's why I think that I still believe in professional development. I'd like to find another more creative way to make it happen, where it has less impact on the school day and the teaching to the students.
I agree.
So that's why I'm voting the way I am.
Yeah, I voted no from my original position, which was, I feel it has too much of an impact on the students. But what I didn't mention a month ago was that, you know, I don't want to look at, like, we want to take away Professional Development Day, but last year was an additional five days, which were on a trial basis, and those are on top of, I forget how many, eight, maybe six days that go, seven that go with the school calendar that everybody gets. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that it's not whether or not you value professional development or not, at least not for me, and I don't think for anybody on the school board, I think we all do. But I think that also in terms of Michael's point, I believe we did ask for creativity, and I believe we did ask for, you know, to reduce the impact on students, and while the seven-day option at 1:30 was better than seven days at 12, there was nothing in between that and something less than five at 12. So I feel like we did ask, we did communicate, you know, for options, and we didn't get anything that was on the other side of the table. And I felt, and I feel, the 1:30 dismissal time is a compromise and fair and least negative impact for the students. And though nobody has written in to say yay or nay about the latest vote in April, I've had many people come up to me and ask me, what is the deal with the calendar in Poncove? And I've said, I guess it was premature, said it's going from same five days, but to 1:30 dismissal. And everybody I've talked to's like, thank you, thank God. So I'm just coming from the, from that angle.
All those in favor?
Can we clarify what we're in favor of again?
We are voting on the amended motion.
So if you're voting a month past, a half a third amendment, five days, 12 o'clock.
So are we clear about what we're voting on? Okay.
Thank you.
So now, I'm calling for a vote, please. All those in favor?
Okay. Thank you.
And item 6B, and this actually has to be read word for word. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we authorize and direct the superintendent, I move that we authorize and direct the superintendent pursuant to 20-a MRSA Sections 1486-2 and 2307 to deliver to the town clerk for display at all polling places the completed notice of amounts adopted at town council meeting for voters at school budget validation referendum.
Second.
And discussion?
As finance chair, I would just like to really thank everyone for all of their incredible hard work. Catherine Messmer, business manager extraordinaire, district leadership team, for whom we have two here in the audience, all of the teachers that start school and then start budget process about a month later. Looking forward to doing this again in six months?
You should do.
So thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Shad, that is my principal.
Thank you. All those in favor? Item 6C. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following job descriptions, HR coordinator, bookkeeper and payroll coordinator, accounts payable clerk, and receptionist.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Could you share for us sort of the history of, maybe an overview of what's changed and what we're...
I would usually look too muted.
Thank you, business expert extraordinaire.
I'm Catherine Messmer for the camera. I'm the business manager. The reason why we're having you approve these changes is we are rearranging, if the budget passes as-is, we are going to rearrange the office so that we have a human resources coordinator help support the staff more, I mean, stronger. My department does an excellent job supporting the staff, but we want to change things around to help so we can support them even more. So her job title is originally payroll coordinator. So she will be doing human resources. We will, we have one person in the office who does the town payroll, does the town AP, and does a lot of other things. She will become the payroll person. And then we have a third person who does school AP, and then other school stuff, she will become AP, accounts payable. They're the people who pay the bills. So, and speaking to the auditors, they also recommend that you break out, if you can, human resources and payroll. So we're trying to do this to help make it more efficient... So we're trying to do this to help make it more efficient, but support the staff even stronger, and also make it more accurate to what they're actually going to be doing. So.
Thank you for the explanation, and also the hard work I'm sure that went into shifting through.
It was a group effort.
Good, thank you. Okay. Thank you. All those in favor? Second. Thank you. Item 6D.
I'd like to move approval of the following policies for second reading and adoption, JJJ, High School Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities Eligibility and Code of Conduct, and KCD, Public Gifts Donations to the Schools.
Second. Thank you. Barbara, would you just tell, I just know, I know we talked about it last time, but a refresher.
We talked about it last time, and there was a minor change to the JJJ policy that was requested by Principal Shedd, having to do the determining eligibility and helping be a little more precise in what we expect administrators to do about that. It doesn't really change the protocols, it's just a little more clarity for administrators. The gift policy, we had slightly amended to be clear that we were asking the superintendent bring before the board for approval and public acknowledgement any request or gift of money or property that's of a commercial value of $5,000 or more, so we can properly recognize it and instruct the superintendent to give our thanks to the donors. So those were the two changes from first reading.
Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6E does not require a vote.
I'm happy to speak to those briefly.
Thank you.
I'll take them quickly out of order. The JJIAB series is all legislated requirements for public schools in terms of private school students accessing our co-curricular, interscale, and extracurricular activities. And the main two takeaways for you on that are two. One is that students from Cape who attend an accredited school competition to be part of our sports or co-curricular teams, if their program that they're in and paying tuition to doesn't offer them. So it's not allowing a student, let's say that perhaps at Greater Portland Christian Academy, where there is a basketball team, to ask to play basketball for Cape. That would not be appropriate. But if there's not a lacrosse team, and they wish to join Cape Lacrosse, they could ask for that. They would be subject to the same tryouts, the same medical histories, and so forth. And if a varsity team has been filled, it can also be a no, because there isn't room. But they have the same access that any other students in Cape Elizabeth would have from soup to nuts in terms of access to our teams and programs. And then all the rest of the series are just the applications and so forth. This comes straight from Main School Management Association sample policy that reflects legislation. Okay?
Can we ask a question?
This is just for students, that private schools does not cover people who are homeschoolers.
Homeschool does a different policy.
Different policy.
If I make it clear.
Right.
Joe?
So I'm wondering, is it Main School Management's recommendation that we deny students from private schools who have a basketball team to play on our basketball team?
They're not allowed to play on our basketball team through the whole MPA.
That's an MPA rule.
Right, right. It's reflecting current practice, and it's making it clear in policy.
Okay.
So in other words, if you choose to go to Baxter Academy, where I think we have a couple students, they don't offer sports teams.
Right.
So the world is their oyster back in Cape.
Okay.
But if you're at a Wayne Fleet, an NYA, a Greater Portland Christian, whatever, and they're offering the same teams we do in their league, that's not an allowable cross.
So those are MPA rules that we're adopting into our policy? These aren't rules that we've discovered there's an issue in.
Correct. No, this is all MSMA language saying, here's where legislation is now, you should clarify in your policy.
Thank you. All right, that makes more sense to me.
Anything else on the JJJs? Okay, the KCD currently exists as around our Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation, and sort of a tip of the hat to them, and thanking them for their grant protocols and so forth, and helping us. We started a couple of months ago thinking that this was due for a look, just because of some continuing cost issues that have arisen, given some of the wonderful, magnificent grants that have come our way, and trying to clarify our relationship with that granting institution. As we got talking, and thanks to the, you know, it takes a village kind of a deal here to talk this through, and a really perceptive comment frankly made by Michael Moore, that I would thank him for, this is really about all granting institutions and our own internal workings, more than any particular granting institution and their relationship to us, because they are all independent. And the question is, how do we process them internally? So the conversation changed to that direction. So out of respect to both CEF and anyone else we approach, their names will be out of the policy, and what we're calling this now is receiving grant funds, and clarifying internally how that would happen. So if you bear with me a second, you'll notice a lot of strikeouts. And I'd like, it's because I think there's some public interest, let me quickly just go through it. The Cape Elizabeth School Board supports the pursuit and use of grant funds that will enhance educational opportunities for our students. The Board desires to work cooperatively with faculty and administrators in determining the purposes for which funds may be used to meet the needs of the district and its students. In order to manage resources and to assist in planning for future years, grant requests with a monetary value of $5,000 or more that meet one or more of the following criteria must have the prior approval of the Business Administrator, the Superintendent, and then be reviewed by the School Board. One involves cost to the school department for installation. Two requires facility improvements paid for by the school department. Three require the school department to pay for additional staff either immediately or as the grant funding concludes. Four, impact buildings and or grounds. And five, require long-term cost commitments by the school department. Grant requests with a monetary value of $5,000 or more require the approval of the Business Administration Administrator and Superintendent, as do all grant requests with a monetary value of $5,000 or less, which meet one or more of the above criteria. Grant requests with a monetary value of $5,000 or less which do not meet any of the criteria above require the approval of the billing principal. In other words, it stops there, under $5,000. I think you heard a couple examples as Ruth Allen read some of the requests that just came in around first-grade teachers traveling to Columbia Teacher College. We don't, we don't need to hear that. It's a principal approval, it was $4,000 some hundred dollars. They'll travel, they'll get some fabulous professional development. The one that is over $5,000, that would in fact come through the Business Manager and the Superintendent, would be the $5,000 plus on the Sexual Awareness Day, which frankly is another fabulous thing that a high school principal approved, but would be appropriate for the Superintendent, Business Manager to be aware of an expenditure of that amount of money, was I thought. No, no sense in trying to kibosh brilliant ideas, instead trying to have a better internal flow of information as some of these larger grants come to fruition, and especially if they meet any of those mid-criteria which have impact for boards in the future, trying to keep those programs afloat, evaluate their effectiveness and so forth. So this was our first effort, first reading, and we would appreciate any of your comments or questions as we go into session again and bring it back to you for a second reading.
I'd just like to appreciate that, that this, there's a lot of thought that has gone into this, and some really nice work with different, with CEF and other institutions, so I appreciate that. And I really like, and it could, I think it may come from Michael, the prior approval, so that I, you want to, I feel that, I'm sure CEF feels like, well, you know, they've gone through that grant process, and to have it approved after the fact.
Didn't make a lot of sense.
Didn't, exactly. So I really like that change, so that once it goes forward, that it's just moving forward with that approval. And I think that's a really nice process for CEF and other processes.
So the last thing I'd like to add in terms of the wording that's in here, is we really tried to be as flexible as possible, to allow as much to happen as possible, while still looking out for the responsibilities of the Board to be aware of and consider ongoing costs or obligations that may be created by money received. And there's, the intent is to treat, keep it as open and free as possible, to let as many things happen as possible, but still fulfill our obligations. And that's why it's really more of an internal process about how we go and seek money and the impact of that.
Just one clarifying, given it now it's called grant, and I haven't thought through this, but do we look at it through the lens if we get, you know, federal and state grants, title, the multiple titles, so if we're, that, unless it's identified, I don't know the ramifications, but given it's called grant, I don't know if that would be applicable. And we don't need to answer that, we might want to think through, you know, that, how that money's used, and if that would, you know.
No, that's a good point. Whether it's private grant funds or whatever.
Federal and state.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the added word, we'll talk about that, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to echo the, from the beginning, Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation has been our school's partner in being an innovative supporter of some of the most fabulous things that have happened in the district. And I love the way that this has been crafted forward. I know that there'd been concern that the creativity and the innovation that has gone into their initiatives, there was a concern that changing the policy would perhaps put the brakes on some of that really important innovation, like the Achievement Center at the high school, or some really fabulous things that have been happening with the robotics team and the printer, and while being respectful of the resources it takes in order to maintain those gifts once we receive those. And we still have to be then responsible moving forward. So this is a lovely balance between the two. So, good work, yeah. And I, I trust that, is it Ellen Jordan, has been in close collaboration and kept in the loop and.
Absolutely. Several reps from CEF have joined us twice, and we've had great conversation. In fact, one of their asks that we incorporated here was not that we have a formal vote to accept, but rather that we simply review and listen to what the Superintendent has to say about these larger grants that may have some additional cost impact. But that was a direct request from them, and we accepted it.
Terrific.
So to an extent also, what this policy now reads mirrors very closely what we are currently doing, with the minor addition that we are now formalizing the process that involves the Board in having visibility on grants of a certain size and potential unco-commitment.
And it clarifies for our administrators, what's expected of them in terms of keeping the Superintendent in the loop of any possible granting opportunities.
I did have one other question, and I'm wondering, in order to help make the process more objective, if maybe we want to think about a procedural portion? So just sort of a checkbox to make it clear, does your grant fall into this category and then follow through? So that, just a thought, we have forms for procedures for lots of other things in the manual that maybe one more form is not what we want. But in, in my experience in dealing with money and grants, sometimes making things as objective as possible helps.
Also possible to simply incorporate in here that the Business Administrator and Superintendent will create procedural steps for their administrators, or something without having tons of.
To codify it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Thank you, thank you for that order.
You're welcome.
Item 6X. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Superintendent's nominations of the following personnel to third-year probationary contracts according to 20A MRSA 13201. Pankow Kathryn Atkinson, Danielle Hesert, and Amanda Marsden, Middle School Linda Cho, and Terry Shavitz, High School Jacqueline Bromage, Nicole Carrera-Siro, Kirsten Donovan, Heather Farrenbach, and Kevin St. Jarre. Instructional support Susan Bahadore and Kristen Tivanian.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6G. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the Superintendent's nomination for the following personnel to second-year probationary contracts, Joshua Chase, Middle School Teacher, Elizabeth Murphy-Lewis, Son Simpson, oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Murphy-Lewis, Social Worker, a Son Simpson Teacher, and Elizabeth Thomas, College Counselor at the high school, and District Ride Molly Kellogg for Gited and Talented Specialist, and Rosemary Cooley for School Psychologist.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6H. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Superintendent's nominations of the following personnel to first continuing contracts. Pankow School Tom Chaltray, Teacher, Erin Taylor, Nurse, Katherine Whipple, Teacher, Middle School Stephanie Befard, Guidance, Paranorius, Teacher, High School Deborah Braxton, Nurse, Candice O'Brien, Teacher, Jonathan Werner, Library and Instructional Technology Specialist, Elizabeth Yarrington, Teacher, and Carolyn Young, Library and Instructional Technology Specialist.
Second. Any discussion, or does it spill one? I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor? Item 6I. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, the Superintendent of Schools to be authorized to execute and deliver vote to authorize amendments to Main School Management Association Property and Casualty Insurance Declaration of Trust and Participation Agreement documents.
May I have a second?
Oh, I second.
Thank you.
Don't leave me hanging.
Because either Kathryn or... Thank you.
Having no idea what I'm about to vote for.
Actually, you did something like this last year about this time, but it was for the Main School Management Unemployment Trust. This is for the Main School Management Property and Casualty Trust. They need 75% of their members to vote and approve the changes to the trust. And so that, this is what this is. It doesn't affect our insurance that we have with them, or it doesn't affect anything that we have with them. They just need our approval to update the trust language. So in your packet, I believe there's a copy of the email that we received from Anita Fakel at Main School Management. So this is just a formality. It's a very confusing formality, but it's a formality.
Seems like if we are so cooperative, we should have a slightly less increase in our insurance.
That'd be nice.
Just to clarify, the trust is the vehicle by which Main School Management Association receives the insurance from its members, and this is the governing document that needs to be updated periodically, and that, this is that periodic update that's requested.
Yes, yep. Any further questions? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Item 7, Committee Reports.
Well, from your friendly Finance Chair, there is the next two steps on the budget process is the Town Council formally votes to send the amount to the voters, and that would be Monday, I feel like it's the 19th. The 19th is a Thursday.
Yeah, so I don't know why it's in.
So it would be Monday, Thursday the 19th. Thank you, friendly Business Manager. So Thursday the 19th. So Thursday the 19th, in these very chambers. And should they vote to accept the amount, which they have indicated that they liked the amount at our workshop when we presented the budget to them, then it goes to referendum, and that is June 14th. Vote early, vote often. All right, maybe not often, but definitely early.
Other committee reports?
Yeah, I've spoken enough about.
We've had a lot, and we thank you.
Are there any subcommittee meetings from, we heard from?
Wellness.
There's been, I guess there's been one meeting of the Spurwing School Committee.
I'll give a brief update. So the Spurwing School Committee, of which we have two school board members present, at their first meeting recently, sort of as an organizational meeting, sort of planned out the additional schedule, and appointed a chairman, which is the member at large, Jim Walsh. We are sort of proceeding from there. The next meeting will be to go over and understand exactly what the state of the building, so how it, and how it can be used, and then proceeding from there.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving. And there's no more community services advisory? Is that right? No, the community services is no longer in our purview.
Oh, I'm on that one. This is really nothing to report.
Sorry.
I think, I think the only thing that there's, trying to come up with creative solutions to is, and this won't be solved overnight, is offering the students a place to work out and use machines without impacting paying customers at the fitness center. So, you know, there's some teachers and some coaches that have asked to be able to have access to that, but there has to be consideration given to, you know, the members of the community who are paying, and that goes through the pool as well. So it's sort of an ongoing discussion. It's sort of philosophical, you know? We're all community members.
Right.
So, but no decisions have been made, or suggestions.
Any other committee reports? We're going to circle back around really quickly.
I do have one resignation to report. High school teacher Siobhan Goble has resigned her position. She will not be returning for the 16th and 17th school.
Thank you. And now, back to item 8, which are school board agenda requests.
So, at some upcoming meeting, and I'm not sure exactly the appropriate timing, but that's sort of following up on what Joanna was referring to earlier, I think that we should really take a look at our school calendar and school day, and if we're really opening it up to look at hard, I would suggest that we also consider what our start times look like, particularly in light of the recent changes by adjacent districts, which makes things, should make things easier to coordinate in terms of some of the after-school activities. And there continues to be mounting evidence that point towards later start times for high schools and earlier start times for elementary kids.
Montana looks very disappointed when you say that.
I'm sorry.
Montana school senior sitting next to you looked very disappointed when you said that.
Now?
You were here before I. It wasn't long ago.
And that looks, I imagine that's going to probably start out as a workshop type.
That's fine. I want to get it on the horizon.
Yeah.
I think it's an important issue for both health and well-being and for the performance of our staff.
Thank you. And as always, agenda requests do not have to come through business meetings. You're welcome to email or call the superintendent and ask for those agenda requests. Moving on to item 9, announcements of upcoming meetings.
I would just mention the final policy committee meeting of this school year will be Monday, June 6th, at 7:30 a.m.
Thank you.
I'm so excited you've kept the 7:30 a.m. my start.
You know, just stop. It is not my start time, if you were looking at my needs, but I.
So the Spurwing Committee has a meeting at 7:30 as well next Tuesday morning.
You have two 7:30 meetings, I apologize, Heather.
In a row?
No.
No.
No, not in a row.
Not in a row.
Okay.
Not in a row, not the same week. Hey, early morning starts are good. Just kidding.
Just kidding.
Maybe.
Any other upcoming? Okay. May I have a motion for number 10, please?
I move we adjourn. A second?
All those in favor?
It's still daylight, I'm not sure we can do this.